Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 20th Select Board meeting. Before we get started, as usual, I want to read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. And so we do have, we have to have a short meeting tonight because this meeting is transitioning right over to a meeting with the Finance Committee, so we're going to squeeze as much as we can into this hour. Does anyone have any announcement? Well, actually, is anyone here for public forum? Anybody have any announcements? Let me just give, I know you're here, Paul, for announcements, but Ed, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
No, thank you, I'm good.
I'm good, too. So, Mr. Labby?
Yes.
You're here with a very important and happy announcement, so we'll turn it over to you. You're welcome to sit because I think the microphone will pick-
I have to turn my page like this because I had Brian on that side.
Oh.
This is an update on the parade, the third time, and we are going to go May 30th at 1:00 p.m.
Yay!
There you go. In conjunction with the Hatfield Post 344 American Legion, the American Legion Memorial Day exercises will be held earlier in the day so that the legionnaires can ride on a float, leading the parade.
Excellent.
My presentation will be short. Specialty groups, Root, staging areas, meeting, and John Novak. Specialty groups, we have 11 bands coming. Top of the order will be the Polish-American String Band, the Philadelphia Mummers. Secondly, will be the Hot Tamales out of Providence, Rhode Island, and we have nine local groups, too many to really mention here. The fun groups that'll be here are the Shriners, and the Shriners are bringing everything they have. And supposedly, and most important, the Hatfield Hellions will be here. And at 1:00, the United States Air Force will do a flyover. The Root, as you people have got it in front of you, will hold eight staging areas. Hatfield Elementary School in Lyons Pavilion, Tim Pachorek's business location, CNS on Elm Street, Smith Academy, the Public Works Yard, and Swazlowski's Potato Farm. Now, at 1:00, all of the units will start to move. So it will be snaking through the Town of Hatfield, one after another. There will be positioning posts on the road that if Unit 1 gets too ahead of themselves, they'll have to slow down and stay where they are, and then push them up. The only unit that will move before 1:00 will be the one out of Smith Academy because we've got to get them up to the Hatfield Market, so they will be able to drop in where they're supposed to go. Meetings were by the thousands, but we met with the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, ambulance, COVID director Marlene Machomsky, some of the parade committee, at least once about three weeks ago. There will be two more meetings as we get closer to establish a lot of this stuff. I think probably the one thing you might be interested in is the police chief wants to have a cruiser in front of each division and in back of each division to keep them together. And our division people will be behind the police in front of the units. We have met with 16 division leaders to set up the parade divisions. We will be meeting twice more with them before the parade. On Saturday, May 29th, we will be decorating all of the trailers because all, everything is going to be mobile. There will be no marchers. We're going to have to be careful with the higher and bigger trailers, i.e. for the mummers, the expandable brass band, and that kind of stuff. And the 30th is really the day. Now, John can help me with this because I'm, as you can tell, I'm not a teenager involved with procedures. John is going to record with three cameras during the parade. People can watch, John, jump in if you, if, you know, if I get scooping. People can watch live stream through YouTube. It will be on YouTube forever, real-time, after. It will also be rebroadcast on our Community Access channel. My daughters and myself will do the audio. This note is to all of you folks up there. Can you please make sure to tell the Hatfield Department participants in the parade to contact Mike Poschek or me as soon as possible? Now, I can give you the information here if you want, but we need to know approximately what size we've got here. Bobby Vetzold is absolutely phenomenal with that thingy flies around and picking up space for where we can put people, but we need to know who's coming, and we'd appreciate that. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them if I can. If not, I did a good presentation.
So, that was great, and I think, you know, this is, this is, I'm so excited about this because, you know, we weren't sure with everything going on if we were really going to be able to hold this ultimately. And it's, I think it's something, we all need something to look forward to, and we all need a little celebration in our lives, so sort of rethinking how we're going to do the parade, I really give you and Bob and my, Bobby Vetzold and Mike Poschek a lot of credit for coming up with this sort of like looping through town. And I just want to mention a couple of things that I think are important. There can't be any on-street parking.
Correct.
Anywhere.
Nowhere.
No on-street parking.
Not on the parade.
So, because when you think about the units we have coming, Shriners, the Hellion, the Mummers, they need space. They need that whole road, and it's obviously, it's going to obstruct view if there's cars, and it's not safe, right? You could have kids running around cars, and it's not safe. People need to know, absolutely no parking on streets. And I think the other thing that I just want to stress is, one of the reasons the Root has been laid out this way is so that it's extra-long to give people lots of options of where to go to watch this. This is specifically so that we don't have people going to the parade, everybody heading down to the center of town like we're used to for our Memorial Day Parade and some of the other big events we've had in town. This is designed for people to specifically not do that. So, the parade route is already up on social media. I'm sure we'll get it up on our, we could put, we could post this map right up on the website. It's up on the Hatfield 350 website.
Yes, it is.
And people should really take a look at this and decide, you know, where they might want to go to watch, not park their car. People can, so many people from town can just stay home and watch this parade. And you can have people over because that is allowed now. So those are just my main things, that people don't need to feel like they need to go somewhere to watch the parade.
Right. We're going to bring it to them.
We are bringing it to them.
And we'll come down and we'll bring it to you.
And then the other thing is, you mentioned these staging areas, and people, anyone paying attention knows, those are some of the best areas to park in town. So there's not, you're not going to be able to park at Smith Academy and watch from there or anything like that. So people need to-
You need to be able to park at, say, at Our Lady of Grace.
Right.
You will be able to park at other, but, you know, some of the people that have done this a lot, and Brenda and Jim Ryan do Florence a lot, they say, "Don't worry about the people coming to park. They'll get there if they want to come. If they don't want to come, well, that's one thing," you know.
Right.
They'll get there, and I believe that, you know. Those folks have been doing it a long time. They're very good at it, and they understand how to do it, and they were pretty happy. We met, we could still go in my garage, six or seven of us, and they were pretty excited about how we were going to do it because they've never done one of these, a rolling deal, you know. But the Mummers have, the Shriners have, all those big-time guys have already done them. So we're not making, we're not reinventing the wheel here. We're just reinventing the wheel in Hatfield, that's all.
Yeah, so it's a little different than we're used to, and I just want to make sure that people start getting that message that we are not encouraging people to come to the center of town to watch this.
Right.
That we're encouraging people to spread out and find a, find a friend on the parade route, not mentioning any names, Brian. Because I'm not on the route. Ed, you're on the route, too.
Ed's on the route.
So somebody's going to have to, somebody's going to have to invite me over, but, so I think this is going to be really great. I love that there's an opportunity to watch it from so many locations and that we've been able to make this work, they've been able to make this work because it's been a tremendous amount of effort and energy.
And I would like to publicly say that our COVID director has been exceptionally good with us as to how we can put this thing together.
You mean Carrie?
There's an awful lot of no, yes, Carrie.
Yeah.
There's an awful lot of no's in the COVID business. And Carrie looked at it and said, "Yes, we can do it." So that's why this parade's going on, because of Carrie.
Yeah.
And I'm, I publicly want to thank her.
Yeah, that's great. And, and the key to that is if everybody does what we're saying to do.
Right.
Don't feel like you need to come down here.
Right.
I mean, that's one of the best things, right, about Memorial Day, "I'll come down here and see it." It's a little different this year, so, great. I'm sure there'll be questions, and people should reach out, you know, I mean, people can certainly reach out to me if they have questions about it. Bobby is available all the time, Paul is, and, or they could call the Town Hall with questions about the specific root or anything like that, but this is great.
I presume we're going to get some questions about the root.
You know the, you know the biggest question I've had since this was published because it went up on social media? How, asking questions about marchers. Are there going to be marchers?
No.
And I keep saying, "No." Well, but there's going to be bands. They're going to be in vehicles, it's going to be, you can't have marchers going a seven-mile route, so, no.
They're jerking.
Two and a half is tough.
We don't want to do a mile and a half.
It's a little different. People will eventually wrap their heads around it, and it'll be great.
Everybody loved it. They thought that was the greatest thing, so.
That was so funny.
The tractors are coming back, the antique cars are coming back, all that kind of stuff is coming together, and we're going to have a good parade. We're going to have fun, so.
The flyover's going to be great. You guys have really covered all the bases, so.
Indeed.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul, and everybody else involved. Thanks.
So our next, we, we need to approve some minutes. Thank you, Paul.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Board of Selectmen joint meeting with the Finance Committee from April 5th, the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from April 6th, and the Board of Selectmen joint Finance Committee meeting from April 12th.
I just, before I second that, on the April 6th, 2021, meeting minutes, the very last page, down near the bottom, it says, "I will go outside and spray bug repellent." That's not what was said. It was, I said, "I would go outside and tell you if there is mosquitoes," in a kiddingly way, that's all. Once we change that, then I will, I will second them.
Okay, a motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Karen, thank you. Those were long meetings.
Yes.
Not, no fun. I've, I've had to do meetings for minutes that long. It's not easy. Okay, so topic two, I want to quickly deal with these. We have some, we have a resignation and an appointment to, for the Council on Aging. So it looks like Gail Capinto, who we had just recently appointed to the Council on Aging, is now unable to accept that appointment. So we did have her resignation, so we're going to need to accept her resignation, which I will make a motion to accept with regret because Gail would have been absolutely fantastic on this, but I certainly understand that she can't do it.
I'll second that. I'm sorry to see her unable to make the meetings.
Yeah.
She would have been great.
Yeah. So a motion made and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I was supposed to ask if there was further discussion. Did you want any, you, you were good.
No, I was, I was just going to offer my thanks as well.
Okay, and then we have Marion Abrams, who-
I'll make a motion to accept Marion Abrams.
Sounds wonderful.
Second.
So a motion has been made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Topic three, Historical Commission, Discussion of Historical Collection. And I, we are joined by Mickey Sanderson here, live in person, and we have Amy on the computer. Do we have anyone, we don't have anyone else joining us electronically about this. Okay, so.
Is, isn't it?
Mickey is, Mickey is physically here, sitting in front of us, Amy, yes.
You guys?
Yes.
You know what? I, oh, boy, I didn't, uh, box.
Uh-oh.
But, well, never mind, I'll just, I'll watch my computer.
Okay, you froze for a little bit there, Amy, so we missed a good share of what you just said, I'm sorry.
Oh, my God. And they're freezing, I'm, I am two minutes away. Can you actually?
We can, we'll begin the discussion. Yeah, we'll begin the discussion, and you can join when you get here, unless you want us to sort of skip to something quick.
Okay, I'll be there.
Okay, do you, do you want to skip to something quick? Let's do that.
Yeah, so don't have to repeat.
Actually, we'll see you in a minute, Amy. That's actually, I think, better because I, I find it so much better to communicate in person. We'll take up some other business, Amy. Take your time. Okay, sure, so we're going to skip to the Cemetery Commission, Discussion of Billings Way property.
So at the last meeting, the Board of Selectmen, you know, voted to award the license of the property on Billings Way to Harrison Bardwell, which was done, and there were some questions regarding use of meter. I don't have any update. I had thought that I would, but I know Harrison is going to be communicating with the DPW director.
Okay, so I did have some follow-up on that. I got a call from the Water Superintendent, and he just explained to me.
Okay.
And I don't want to, it was, you know, I don't want to say anything wrong because it was somewhat, you know, technical or whatever, but because of the type of irrigation he wants to do metering, that was appropriate. So then it made sense to me. That was just never explained to me that night, and I just wanted to make sure we were treating all our farmers fairly.
And I had communication with Harrison after our last meeting, and he understands, and so I don't think he has any concerns.
Okay.
So he'll just need to contact the Water Department if he's going to-
Okay, I think he's going to do like drip irrigation or something, so it seems like a different type of-
Something a little different.
Something a little different, okay.
So, may I? So that's actually topic seven, Underhold Business.
Yeah.
But topic four talks about the Cemetery Commission?
Yeah, we, yes.
Oh, Cemetery, that's right. Cemetery Commission is supposed to be joint.
There's two Billings Ways.
That's right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, yeah, confusing myself here. So yes, the Cemetery Commission is supposed to be joining us tonight. Lucinda Williams from the Cemetery Commission, and I know Joe LaValle is going to be joining us as well.
Joe isn't on the Cemetery-
Joe is not on the Cemetery Commission, but he still, you know, does provide some guidance to them.
Okay.
But just a reminder to the board that provided that article that's on the annual town meeting warrant, the Board of Selectmen will need to vote this property, and we, that was tabled last week.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we should hold that for when they join us as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're just going to keep skipping around here. So let's go to Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Okay, I have in your packet a copy of the contract with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who will be providing consulting services regarding the town's Hazard Mitigation Plan update, and I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen approve the agreement and sign it.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract between the Town of Hatfield and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for consulting services.
Second. So a motion's made and second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Root 5, Water and Sewer Project update.
Um, did we, we're skipping over topic six. Do you want to do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't see it. Yeah, we should do topic six.
Okay. So the Board of Selectmen has adopted accounts payable reimbursement policy previous time, and this has been revisited with the current accountant, and so this revision update, there wasn't really any significant changes. We did just shift some things around and inserted some additional language, and I asked the Board of Selectmen to accept this and vote to adopt it.
Is it in, is it, is the change mostly in process?
Yes, yeah.
Not changing, it is changing the threshold? That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, I, I think, um, so that $300. Number three, most of the items.
Is this not part of an HR policy?
It's not currently.
So, you, I'm sorry, you didn't finish your thought because I just had one thing I wanted to ask about this. When you're done, so go ahead.
I'm all set, I'm good.
I interrupted you, so.
I just, I know, it seems like there was some, if I recall, there was some issues with employees being required to submit copies of their credit card statements when they, so if, you know, if you went to Home Depot and bought a broom, it wasn't enough to give the receipt for the broom, you had to give your credit card statement.
So you need, you need proof that your credit card was actually charged for that.
Wouldn't it show on the receipt?
Individual needs to be the holder of that credit card account.
Okay.
Yeah. You, you could have anybody put in, submit that receipt, and they didn't actually purchase, make that purchase.
I mean, I, I think that was an issue for some employees, that they were being required to submit.
So when someone submits a receipt, we have no proof of knowing that that is that individual's credit card that was charged.
Okay, so something that shows-
That they are the name on the-
Connecting those dots.
Yes.
Okay.
This probably doesn't happen all that often, anyway.
It shouldn't.
I mean, you're using your-
Once in a while, it does.
So this was something that I kind of spearheaded a little bit in that the policy wasn't getting followed, so with Lori's help, we, we, we just tweaked it a little bit so that it's out there and consistent that everybody knows the-
Oh, my God, I just-
Because I have accounts at various places so that they don't need to. So unfortunately, it does make it a little inconvenient, but the idea is that we don't want you to have to use your own money to buy stuff for the town.
Yeah, I mean-
That's the ultimate goal, is that if there's another way to do it, not the easier way.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree. I just want to make sure we're not asking employees to submit a lot of really personal information to be able to get reimbursed for a $50 shovel. So I would assume they can submit a credit card statement with things redacted and-
And maybe, exactly.
Okay.
I think number four is a little over the top, personally.
Yeah, I agree.
About a Google's Map picture, I mean, if you took a different route, I'm, you know.
I agree that it, I mean-
You got stuck in traffic, you got rerouted, so now it's not going to match Google's Maps, right?
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, for heaven's sakes, plus you're, I mean, that's just silly.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be verified if you, you know, with the, with the origin and the destin, the destination of the trip, that can be verified. So I, I saw that, and I would agree with that.
Okay, so we'll go back and-
Yeah, why don't we just not, I mean, I, I certainly agree with the intent, but since we're sort of trying to move through this meeting because we have a Finance Committee meeting and, and, I don't know, I guess I'm fine, again, I'm fine with the intent. I think it should be part of the HR policy ultimately, travel reimbursement should be-
No, it cannot be part of the HR policy.
Sure it can.
It has to be a separate policy.
It, but it can be housed, if you will, or part of the HR policy, like every other company. So, I'm, Sharon.
I don't think that's correct for this town.
Well, why don't we, let's investigate it. Let's investigate it. Let's investigate it, and at that time, we'll also revisit the whole policy. It would be my suggestion.
That's fine. I think this is pretty close, but I, you know, if we could find another way to confirm mileage, other than printing a Google Map or whatever, I mean, okay.
That's what the state requires.
Okay, so we will revisit this.
But we're not state, yeah, we'll revisit it.
We'll, let us think on it.
We'll revisit that, and we don't need to spend a lot of time on it right now.
Okay.
Okay, ladies, well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak for the chair.
No, that's okay, so.
It took you less than two minutes to get here, by the way.
Yeah, nicely done.
It jumped in my car, it ran right down.
Okay, so.
Okay, so I'm just going to introduce this. We are here to talk about, you know, what we've had the meetings about is where the museum is going to go, the future, short and long term. I just, before we give our little presentation, I want to preface by saying, we have been working with the Historical Society on the new agreement, which they have now signed, and we are going to have a meeting, and I assume we are all going to sign. So this is a great, we're really working together now, whereas before, our relationship had kind of separated. We really clarified what each party is responsible for. The other thing that's come up that's very exciting is the Smith Alumni Association has decided that they no longer want to own a bunch of Sophia Smith furniture. Things from her house, her bed, her-
The Smith College alumni.
Her bureau, yeah, Smith College, and they are offering that to us, which is a very exciting donation. They are going to be storing it for a little while, which gives us some time to figure out where we might be able to put it, and that sort of brings me to-
Yeah, good segue. Thanks, Amy. So, we, she and I, Hatfield Commission is here to kind of plant a seed, and going back to some minutes and some emails, feasibility study of 2013, almost 10 years of, should it be the second floor? I guess that was Plan A, I'm kind of using your words, Ed, and Plans B, C, or D that could have, could have been new construction, which I can tell you from my business is pretty much not a non-starter, at least in, in 2021. Modular construction, farm museum, rehab, or renovation. I'm here to, to put forward a Plan E, and I think it's probably past time that Hatfield consider, with the support of, of the Select Board, Select Persons, that the Commission explore a permanent, long-lasting solution with town approval and CPA funds, so fantastic use of them, to purchase an existing antique home in Hatfield Center. So the upsides are obvious. The, the Historical Society has not had a home for their, for the belongings, the town has not had a home for their belongings, there's been no site or communal center for these happenings, and I feel like it's kind of apropos in the 351st year of Hatfield to continue to, to advance the collection. I mean, this is quite a boon. To, to think that this is falling into our lap, and we went to the Alumni House a couple weeks ago with members of the society and, you know, touched these things, including a very, very, very large rug that supposedly was in her study, her, yeah, that right now we couldn't even display if we wanted to. So in addition to hosting HHS events, it could house almost the complete town collection, one would presume, in one place appropriately. There are towns all around us who have figured out ways to do climate control, so, so, you know, precious artifacts and books and papers are stored properly. I'm going to say this, not at Benson's, and, and the money's even from the Benson's storage, I think, has probably been not well-spent in the last months and years. The possibility to host outside events is also possible for outs, weddings, if these, if this place happens to have beautiful gardens. I know I'm kind of going there, but that's kind of how I think. And obviously, the most important would be an extreme source of pride for the Hatfield community. It's kind of shocking that we don't actually have a, a place over the years. I know that there was a, the fourth meeting house before it was blown over in a winter was supposed to potentially be that space, but that was a while ago now. And I do have, just so you have a visual, every town has this around us. Without, I mean, even Schutzbury has a little schoolhouse, the West Stool Schoolhouse that houses their museum. So I thought it would be appropriate to, and I'm giving homage to Brian's hometown here. You're in the center of this-
Wisteria Hurst.
-courage, of course.[1704.04] Village, of course. And that's a good point, because Wisteria Hurst House was actually a donated property. The Skinner family donated that. So that is even a possibility. And I do think there's a number of families in town that take a great deal of pride in their home, and perhaps would consider donation or partial donation in a trust or however that could work, I'm not an attorney. But I think it's, you know, fine time for, for this to kind of pop to the forefront as an idea moving forward, and have it be permanent and long-lasting.
Yeah, I think, you know.
Do you have?
It was sort of exploring the idea of, you know, as we said, it's a place where we could help support it by renting it for functions. I know, I got married at a property that was owned by the town of Waltham, and it was a great deal because it was less expensive than a lot of other places in the town of Waltham makes out. You know, there, I think there are various ways. I also talked to Bob Wagner about CPA funds, and he said, yes, very much that CPA funds are available. That is something that people do is buy a historical house, preserve, you know, a historical building in the town, or, you know, buy it, purchase it. So that's certainly in the mix there.
Let me see that, I just want to, because people maybe didn't see that.
It seems to me, and this opens up a whole different discussion.
John?
I'm zooming in on it.
You are, okay.
Okay.
It seems to me like.
This is the 15 Historical Society homes or collection museums in the towns all around us, and pretty much landmarks in some of these towns.
I mean, if you look at some of these buildings, I mean, some are clearly like more on the residential side, but some aren't. Like, it seems like the building where the museum, the library building, would be the perfect spot for, to all be museum and, and library be in a more modern spot. You know, I think some communities are, are building these massive libraries. I mean, Amherst, I think they just approved a $36 million library, that's unbelievable. I would say that we could do a smaller scale library and then, you know, that's just, that's me spitballing, this is what I'm saying.
And Hatley just did. So the, you know, the.
Well, I, I don't know if you remember back, not too long after I moved here, I was on the Library Committee, and we were applying for a grant from Massachusetts Library. They were handing out big, big grants, and that unfortunately did not pan out. I know that program, the state program was suspended, I don't know if it started up again, but that is unfortunately an opportunity that.
I mean, I think from what I gathered from some of the conversations I had, it didn't see, it seemed like Hatfield would like a library, but it didn't necessarily want to spend major millions of dollars on it. I've always thought a library and a Council on Aging house together would be really great. And again, it gets in, then we just open this whole can of worms and we start going down all kinds of twisty, turny roads that, you know, lead to massive dollar signs. But I, you know, it's all part of this larger discussion. We've talked about this before, that we have a lot of space needs and.
Well, I think my, the approach that we talked about in several of our meetings was to actually keep it as simple as possible, and to keep it as fiscally responsible as possible. And that's why we're, we'd like to focus on CPA dollars, approved by the town, and, and focus on a house, a residential home, Maple Elm, I mean, Main Street, obviously, even North Street, I mean, there, there are houses. Yeah, yeah, there are, there are opportunities.
Nikki being an agent.
And I tend to hear about some of those things before they happen, and it, perhaps, you know, it's not going to happen maybe in the next six or eight months, or 10 months or 12 months, but I think that if the word gets out, that there are potentially people that would be like, hey, you know what, my house is pretty appropriate, maybe I should go talk to somebody. So that's why we're here.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, that's sort of our.
Honestly.
It's a long-term, you know, it's sooner is better, because again, you know, with this, we would love.
The collections, yeah.
To be able to take the Smith collection.
That would be so great.
So we have more storage needs now.
Yeah.
And I've been in some of these, I certainly have not been in all of these, but I've been in at least a couple.
Yeah.
And they're so well-done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, my feeling on it is that, I like the idea, I mean, I think, when we think about this collection, I think everything has to be on the table, every option, your A through your E, they all have to be things that we consider. And I do think that, you know, we've got our hands full with the budget and town meeting and all of that, and we're, what, a month away from getting through those things? And I think we should start to convene some type of working group about the space, because there, this is part of a much larger discussion, and I find myself, I keep saying this to departments as we're talking about different things, whether it's COA or you guys, that this is part of a larger discussion. Let's start having that larger discussion.
Well, and I think we need to, along, I agree wholeheartedly with that. But to your point a little earlier, Diana, when you talked about the library and the building, you know, the discussion should be a little bit of a, not a little bit, it should be about a long-term, but with the different, not just Historical Society, but maybe bring in the library and other groups that may, you know, have ideas, suggestions, and let's put our best foot forward and see what we come with.
I guess for me is that I, you know, going back to the library, that actually was the beginning of the idea of putting this upstairs.
Right.
Because they were going to lose their space in the library.
Right.
That was, you know, never the ideal solution. I don't like that solution a whole lot. I think it would be, there's just not enough space, and any money spent trying to make that into a museum, I think.
You mean upstairs?
Is a waste, yeah. So I guess this is, you know, the Historical Commission, what we're telling you is, the Historical Commission is looking at something much.
I think it's great, it's a great idea.
Bigger and better in mind. You know, if it turns out to be that, that we could get the whole Dickinson building, I can deal with that.
We have to talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, really, what is the best use of that building? And, and then, and then that shell game of then, if one person moves, where does everybody else go?
Right, right, well, that's, that's why I was suggesting.
And I, you know, we've done the work downstairs on the Council on Aging, which is nice, but I don't think it's, I, I think our seniors should have a better facility, should have, they really should. And how, I think it'd be great to have a library and a COA together, somewhere. And I think we need to think beyond that little area you just mentioned. It's okay to think about other parts of town for something like that. So I would suggest, so yes, this is a great idea to think about, to start, to put on the table, but I, I think we need to start talking about, you know, put together some type of working group, look at these. I know it's done, it's been done before. It won't be the first time we've looked at this, but.
And that can certainly be, you know, after town meeting, I realize you have a lot on your plate, but because we had started having those discussions, you know, with the short, you know, I think short-term, we should get the stuff out of.
Yeah, out of Benson's.
Out of, you know, and put it up, we can crowd it upstairs somewhere.
Well, it sort of sounds like you already have sort of a working group already developed, right?
Well, I mean, there, for one aspect of it, but there's, there's definitely some more people that need to be at the table.
Yeah, I think we should, as, as you guys, you know, are working with, like I said, the Dickinson and the library, we should sort of consider this again, you know.
Yeah, I agree with Diana. I think that, you know, certainly in two, if you can share space, it's always better, you know, for.
Well, and I don't know what's going to happen with, you know, they're talking about a ton of recovery money for infrastructure and capital types of projects, I don't know, that's all.
That would be exciting.
I mean, maybe we should be ready for something like that, so.
All right, well, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for all your time and effort on this.
Yes, great, great presentation too, by the way. Okay.
I noticed we skipped over topic one. Karen, did Claudia, she wasn't planning on attending, Claudia Sardi?
In 18 minutes.
So we do not have a COVID update?
We don't.
Other than yesterday's.
Then the phone call, okay. Well, that's disappointing.
So Cemetery, Lucinda is joining.
So we're going to backtrack now. We skipped all over the place, Lucinda, hello?
Muted.
You're muted, okay, perfect.
Hi, Lucinda.
So we're going to have this discussion on the Billings Way property. Marlene, did you want to?
Yes, so there's an article on the warrant that the Cemetery Commission has.
Do you know the number?
It's, they're not numbered yet. It is on page, I will tell you, it's on page four.
Correct.
The second article.
It's on the draft.
It's on the draft.
This is not approved.
Yes, it's not approved, an approved warrant yet.
Okay, so it would remove it from cemetery purposes, or from municipal purposes, and put it to cemetery purposes. I don't understand why, why do we need to do this? What am I missing?
Well, my understanding from, again, Lucinda jumped in. Go ahead, Lucinda.
Yeah, do you want me to speak? Yeah. So Lynn and Diana, I believe you were involved in this when it first, and about when the town acquired the land.
Yes, I.
When the town acquired the land of Hatfield resident, it was for the purposes of the cemetery. And between that time and now, a lot of the language has changed. So what we are doing today is really, the purpose of this article is not to change anything, but it's to keep it as it was, as the intention was when the town first acquired the land. The town acquired the land for cemetery purposes, and what has happened over the intervening years is that there's been updating and updated language that's come in, and so in order for it to stay, or under sort of the auspices of the Cemetery Commission, it, we need to have this article. Currently, the language is municipal purposes, and the desire is to have it be a cemetery purpose, specifically called that, with that specific language in the article.
Lucinda, can I just ask a question?
Like, what difference does it make? And you know what, this Board of Selectmen is great, and you, I think all understand that that's what the purpose of this land is for. As we go forward and other people are elected, will the future Boards of Selectmen understand the importance of having this land be designated solely for cemetery purposes? The Cemetery Commission is elected with a single eye to, to what is best for the cemeteries in the town. The Boards of Selectmen have, you know, a lot of, a lot of things that they are looking over, so that's the, that's the purpose of the change, is to allow the townspeople to keep it under the auspices of the Cemetery Commission.
Okay, so, so just a couple of questions. You said language has changed, where?
The language, as I understand it, the language in how they write up articles and stuff, that there's more defined language now about municipal purposes, whereas when it was, you know, it was just given to the town, purchased it, and it didn't have, didn't have, you know, specific language in there, it didn't need to then. I don't have the old, the original language for when it was purchased.
You mean, so we must have a deed, right? The, so I, so yes, you're right, it was a long time ago, I actually negotiated this purchase on behalf of the Select Board with the landowner that we purchased it from. And if I recall, the cemetery had said that they were supportive of buying it, but they did not expect to need that land for well over 50 years. And I, I think that that might even be extended a little bit, because there's been sort of a change in how a lot of people choose their sort of final, you know, a lot of people are being cremated.
Resting place.
Now, right, instead of buried. I guess I still don't understand, I mean, the town, we, we hold all kinds of land, right? So we don't have separate departments owning land everywhere. I, I guess I'm still not clear. I mean, it's obviously contiguous to the cemetery, I don't think it's, I don't think anything can be built there, it's wetlands, isn't it? Is it wet?
I don't know.
Well, or it's, it's.
I don't think it's wetland.
It's at least bordered on one side, I think, by some wetlands. Yeah.
Well, so, so to your point, Diana, about the 50-year thing, I mean, you, we just don't know, so there are currently about, on the Main Street Cemetery, there are only in that front section, which we are currently selling plots for, there are only about 75 spaces left. Now, not all of those spaces have stones and have, you know, people in them, but we do have, the plots are sold, so there are only 75 spaces left in that cemetery before we need to go to the back area. And, you know, fortunately, we didn't need it over this past year, you know, I mean, the concern was, had things gone really poorly with this pandemic, we might be in a very different place. We, I don't, I expect that it will not be as much as 50 years, I think it's just a handful of years, because there are only 75 spots.
So currently, currently though, the land, the land is being used by the community gardens, correct? And, and then Harrison is renting the rest currently?
That is correct, the local farmer, yep.
And so then, it would be the cemetery that would have jurisdiction over the continuation of the community gardens, and then you would have to negotiate with the, with a farmer for the lease instead of the Select Board?
They would be putting it out to bid.
I mean, I guess I, I don't know, I, I feel like the Select Board should control the town lands, that's how I feel, and that's.
And I think the intent was, so if Diana was on the board the first time, so are we talking 15 or 20 years ago, when this may have initially, somewhere in that?
Yeah, it was.
So it's been quite a few years with quite a few different.
Probably closer to 20, yeah.
Quite a different group of members of the Board of Selectmen and women. So I guess my point is, I would agree that I think lands that are going to be rented and leased, public lands, should be under the jurisdiction of the Board of, the Select Board, with the full knowledge of, as passports have done as well, that ultimately this land, not to put buildings on, but it's land to be used for the cemetery as it's needed. I mean, a Board of Selectmen are who approved the community gardens a couple of years ago when Steph Slisch and others came in to promote it, also entering into the contract with Harrison. I really don't see personally, or as a member of the Board, a need to change the process that we have in place right now.
And actually, the original, when, when we were negotiating this, the original intent was that the back part would be available for recreation fields, which we never did make happen. So, but we found these other two uses for it, which is also great.
A lot of that back part has been used for a number of different, a number of different things, firemen have used it for, you know, parking at different events and stuff like that, so there have been a number of things. But you're right, it's not been designated a specific field, we don't, I mean, it's really important not to have any permanent structure go in, right? The shed that the community garden uses is on a pallet, so it can be easily, you know, forklift comes in and takes it away, should, you know, should we need that space.
I mean, I, I, again, I don't see the need to change, Ed is.
I just have a question. I mean, everyone knows the intent of that property is for future use of the cemetery, so I'm just wondering, what has changed that is of concern to the Cemetery Commission that is saying they want it back under their jurisdiction? That's what I'm just curious about.
So I don't, I don't think, what has changed is the language. I think the intent was originally to have the Cemetery Commission oversee it, and currently the Board of Selectmen oversee it.
I think the intent, I think the intent was to have the town acquire it for cemetery purposes, yeah. With other things that could happen in the meantime, and we found two great uses for it, to keep it open and producing and available quickly.
Yes, absolutely.
So, again, I, I, I think that the Select Board should oversee town lands, that's how I, that's how I feel.
I agree.
Ed?
I mean, I, I, I think we all know that the intent of that land was for cemetery purposes, but while the land was available, the town went ahead and put in the community gardens until no longer would be allowed to, or they let a farmer farm it until no longer would be allowed to, which would be probably in the next 50 or 60 years. But I see the concern of there's only 75 cemetery plots left, there's a concern that, well, we want a little bit more. I guess the Cemetery Commission is sort of saying, we sort of want a little bit more control over that to ensure nothing's built on it, but I don't think anything would be built on it, because we all know what the intent and purpose of the land is. So under, under the mass laws and under the town regulations, the Board has always been the overseers of town, town lands. So I, I don't know if maybe a better compromise is something to say that the Board oversees the land. the land, but the Cemetery Commission each year will review with the Board whether or not anything else can be put on it, or they need to take some of the land back. Maybe, maybe that's a better compromise.
Yeah, and I also think, and I should think the Cemetery Commission actually would want the Select Board to be the entity entering into the lease with the farmer rather than themselves and going through that whole process and all of that.
And, and you know what? And we will work with whatever, whatever we need to work with. We do know of examples where things that, you know, the Board of Selectmen have voted on things which then are forgotten by the time, you know, a different board comes around. So, you know, we wish to ensure that that doesn't happen and that, that, you know, the the use of the, that land is, you know, now and forever for our children, our grandchildren, you know, ready and prepared to be used for cemetery purposes.
Actually, I believe if I'm, if I'm correct, going back years ago, there was discussion while the land was available before it became cemetery plots, then they were talking about using it for recreational purposes. There was some discussion on that.
That was part of the negotiations. That was part of actually what even the homeowner liked, or the property owner, excuse me, liked about the, the deal was that it could be some playing fields maybe, and, but of course, playing fields cost a lot of money to put in. And I think the town never really had the money to be able to do that. And so instead, we found these two agricultural uses.
And agricultural use is great, right? We don't have to pay towns, town employees to mow it. We don't have to, you know, do all that work to keep the weeds down as long as it's being used for agricultural purposes. So that's a great use of it in the meantime. So we're really, you know,
I agree.
Expect to keep, continue that.
I mean, maybe we could set up some type of procedure. We, the lease is for what term now?
Just for the growing season. It expires in November.
It's a year to year, so we're not doing any long-term leases with Harrison?
Not right now, just
Not right now, but I think the plan would be to maybe get
To be able to do it for three years.
I mean, and I think that would be good for us and for the farmer, in this case Harrison, to get into a, a longer-term lease. But maybe part of that procedure
We have done that before.
Maybe part of that procedure, Lucinda, when we have to revisit that as, as leases are expiring, is just to touch back with the Cemetery Commissioners about, do you, do you want us to renegotiate this? Are you looking for more space at this time? So sort of work on it together.
Yep. I, I, I'm sorry. I, I do believe also, Lucinda and Diana, that when the community gardens first came to the Board of Selectmen, we actually reached out to the Cemetery Commission for their opinion and their thoughts on should that be something, as far as where it's located, is that something the Cemetery Commission was okay with? Because I remember Marlene having conversations with the then, with the then-chairman, and there was no problem. So, so there's been, there's been communication, yep.
I mean, I very much consider that cemetery land.
Yeah, agreed.
Where the, the Select Board does oversee sort of the technical, the lease, the technical stuff on it in the meantime, but in my opinion, that cemetery land, it's just
I would agree.
Not needed right now and, but, you know, I fully intend to be there someday, so I want to make sure that there's plenty of space. Hopefully not too soon. But, so, I, I, that was clearly the spirit of that, Lucinda, and I, I know what you're referring to. That's a whole different situation in terms of other things, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for joining.
I'm gonna trade places with Daryl.
Yeah. Musical seats. We do, we, so we are like a couple of minutes late. Marlene, is there anything on here that you feel we really, the, the need to touch on very quickly?
Just the other, the next item was going to be Topic A before meeting with the Finance Committee, other than to say that work was, the water work was finishing up on Chestnut Street and Contractor Gilaher will be moving to West Street to start doing some work there.
Okay, so all that stuff is coming out of Chestnut Street?
Will be, yes, absolutely. They'll be, they're, they should have finished up last week.
Oh, I think there's still stuff around, but, okay.
And, and that's it.
Okay.
And I just need to
The rest is all, Topic Nine is all the rest of the meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so at this point now, we're going to merge our meeting with the Finance Committee to review all of our budget and warrant articles and capital project things that we've been working on for the last number of weeks. So welcome, Finance Committee. So it looks
How's everybody?
Good, Daryl. So I see Betsy, Kim, Diane. Is Sean on?
Uh, I hope so.
I was gonna get a drink of water.
He, he should be joining us momentarily.
Okay, but we can, you have a quorum, so we could, we could get started.
We have a quorum, so, so for the Finance Committee, I will call our meeting to order.
Okay, we, so we're, we're, we're moving on to the Finance Committee stuff. You're welcome to stay, but we won't be backtracking on, on any of the other matters. Right, which we did receive. I don't believe it's on our agenda for any action tonight.
Under Topic Nine. Yeah, I, I, so I, I think it's just probably more of an informa- I believe it's probably more of an informational
Yeah, I mean, we
It's on our agenda because it's more of an informational, we received a petition.
Right.
I spoke with your lawyer. He told me that the, the voters checked out on the ones that were listed and that he thought would be going forward with the warrant. We just want to make sure that it goes on the warrant.
Well, if it legally has to go on the warrant, it'll go on the warrant.
Correct.
Right. We'll, we'll go on the advice of counsel on that.
Yep.
Yep.
For sure.
I don't, I don't have anything from
For the Finance Committee, if you can hear me, Marlene had to go into her office for a different computer where the spreadsheet lies, so I don't know if that's gonna take a minute.
She, it might take her a minute. I'm gonna, I do want a drink of water.
Okay, we're, we're gonna take like a one-minute
Do you mind if we just take a one-minute break?
Okay, so are we okay to get started?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, so there's been some
This is being, John is recording.
John Novak is recording this, just FYI.
So there's been some revisions to the budget. I know Marlene and Sharon and Lori have been working hard on, hard at the spreadsheet this week, so we, Finance Committee met on Saturday to just go over some of the changes and we've got, got a few things we want to talk about tonight and that, that changes we want to make. So Betsy, do you want to leave this part of the conversation?
Okay, sure. The first thing was that we wanted to confirm with the school that they were happy with the number they had proposed for FY '22 because it was about $40,000 lower than the amount of money they had asked for in the previous fiscal year. My understanding is that the reason, the reason behind that is that there is $93,000 in COVID funds coming to the school, that they're anticipating receiving that in FY ' '22? Or have they received that already? Marty or Riley, can you respond to that?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, Marty. How are you doing?
Good.
So you're talking about the, the differences between fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 and the actual
Yes, the amount.
Yeah, so the amount, I don't know how that happened. That was in the, the year previous to me coming on board, but the difference is actually in lower. So we thought we were asking for a 3.25% increase compared to fiscal year '21. When we have the actual number in, that's been, you know, Riley verified it and, and you, and Marlene looked at it too, the actual ask is only 2.3 increase in local.
But we weren't so concerned about the percentage, but more about the actual dollar amount being requested.
Yeah, so because the, that number was off, I mean, we can do a quick tally here. I think you're on, I think you're on target, but what'd you say, about $96,000?
About $40,000 less.
Just the bottom line.
Yes. Let me just double-check the math here.
So the, the difference, there was that discrepancy, but the difference in why the '20 to '21 and '21 to '22 is because of the COVID money that we are getting to offset fiscal year '22's budget.
Okay.
16 cents. I'm sorry, I'm losing, I'm, I'm not here.
Yeah, so we, we just wanted to make sure that that number was, was correct.
What's the number?
You're speaking.
That you were okay with, with the number that is on the spreadsheet now.
Yeah, so the number I have for fiscal year '22 in local appropriated is $4,785,748.20, you know, 20 cents. Is that what you have?
The number we have too.
Okay, great.
Okay. Right, we just, yeah, great, all right. Thank you for confirming that. We're just, we're at the point now, we're, we're getting close to wrapping this up and we want to make sure these numbers are good.
I appreciate that.
Okay, Betsy, do you want to?
So then, the other thing that we wanted to talk about was reflecting on our discussions at the last meeting was whether, given the fact that non-school employees, to other town employees, had taken 0% increases at least one, if not two years running, we wanted to go back and revisit the amounts being put into salary lines in each department. Marlene had put in an amount of equal to about $40,000 across departments, which would have been a 2% increase to each. And we would like to consider increasing that another 2.3%, which would be about another $45,000 to the salary lines in the non-school budgets. Does the Select Board have a thought?
Well, my thought is this is the first I'm hearing about it.
Yes.
So this would be, so this is, so they get 2% plus 2.3%?
Right.
And that would be non-school, so you're talking about DPW, Council on Aging, Police, Fire?
It was either school or non-bargaining unit, Betsy. Say that again, Sean?
Decide.
I, I, I just was, remember the conversation, I remember what, whether, because there's another sort of contracted bargaining unit in the town.
Yes, there is.
Right.
DPW, yes. I don't know, you know, I don't think we made that clarification at our meeting. Daryl, do you have a?
We did not make that clarification. What we wanted to do was make sure that, you know, you know, if I can back up, we've got, right now in the levy limit, we've got about almost $186,000 on the levy limit. So we were using, we were looking to, you know, kind of use some of that for various things. And I know that there's, you know, as Betsy alluded to, the, you know, salaries are one of the things we'd like to address. There's, I know there's some concerns in some departments. So the, the additional 2.3% or about $45,000 would go to individual departments. It would, it would go, so, so DPW, Fire, Police. That, am I correct on that, Finance Committee?
Yes, that sounds right.
Okay, so any
How can it go to the DPW? We're in contract.
Yeah, but
The reasoning for that?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Diana.
No, go ahead. The reasoning was Go ahead and finish your thought, Daryl. The reasoning was what?
The reasoning we, the reasoning was is we had the money available and there's been years where we, we haven't been able to meet that need. We know that as far as the town employees go, that, you know, we have some challenges retaining certain positions and we, you know, there's challenges in every department. And we thought this is one way to address some of those challenges on, to help, to help things out, so.
Well, I think that's great. And I think that it, it also helps with another challenge that we're facing, which is retention, employee retention and, and also, you know, attracting, you know, the best candidates when we do have openings, which
Right.
You know, we've, we've struggled with both of those things, retention and attracting good candidates, so.
And we want to be, be clear as the Finance Committee, I mean, you know, we really don't have anything to do with how much any, anybody gets paid, but we do have some say is what goes in the spreadsheet, so.
So I don't, I don't know, how, how does that work, though, with a, with a department like the DPW, which has a union contract? Because we're just about to open those negotiations, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, I guess
More money available for you in that negotiation.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I, you know
May I say something?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So, Daryl, referring to your comment about the excess levy capacity, I added another $8,000 this afternoon to the sewer wages. Apparently, we haven't, we haven't included in the wages the increase that the wastewater superintendent received in December of 2019. And we had not adequately funded overtime. So the wastewater superintendent estimates about $24,000 for overtime, but, so I added $8,000, so it's covering their requested budget. Therefore, it, it leaves the excess levy capacity at $177,874.55.
Okay, thank you. I, and, and I don't think that changes our decision to, you know
I'm totally fine with it.
Additional increase in salary lines.
I just wanted to make, because you had referenced the 185, 899
Everybody?
Levy capacity. Just wanted to make sure
So, so, so just for the benefit of everybody, can you tell us where that, what that number is now?
874.
It's up on the screen, Daryl.
Okay.
So I just, so I just
Thank you. Oh, there it is. Okay, so that'll, so I don't think that, go, go ahead.
I, I mean, you know, I think that this, I, I'm, I'm in support of this and I think it's, you know, really just a good faith gesture to our town employees who, you know, the, the fact of the matter is there's been times we've balanced the budget on their backs and that's never, ever felt good for me when I was on the board before. It doesn't feel good on, if I'm on the board now. And so I think that, and it's a reasonable, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a nice reasonable sort of raise, increase to give everybody. They've worked hard this year. I just want to be clear, so So not the school, everyone else. So like Marlene, we've just negotiated some contracts, but they would still now get this two and a half. Dukoschak, all of those folks as well as, okay.
We're assuming that $45,000 would cover that, although Marlene would have to verify that for us.
Marlene and Sharon will need to verify this number.
And the other thing is that the the school did negotiate raises for each of the current three years in addition to the step increases they get. So that was also true in the previous period when town employ other town employees were receiving no increases.
Right.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it balances out too. I think it's a great idea personally. Just just to be clear, it was the initial 2%, which is about 40,000, an additional 2.3, which is.
Can't hear you, Brian.
Yeah, well.
So he's just confirming that it's the original 2% we were talking about, and then another 2.3%.
For a total of 85,000, is that right?
Correct.
And that 85 will come off of the 170.
And if that if that 85,000 is really wrong, we would like someone to let us know because we think we think that's the number we're putting in.
Okay, I think Sharon popped on. Did you want to pipe in on this or?
With 4.3, right? Somebody said 4.5.
Yeah. Yes, she is, Diana. Sharon's responding.
0.3.
So 4.3 is the number. I just want to be okay, thank you. I'll do I'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
And and that that amount of money is coming off the 177. Can you ask that?
I have. Oh, go ahead.
Can I just confirm that that amount of money, whatever Sharon can?
Let's sit on.
Eric, can you hang on one second? That amount of money, that amount of money will come off of that 177,874 that we're now identifying as our our levy capacity?
It's on limit.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's not coming out of it. Yes, but it's off the levy limit.
Okay.
But part of it already has in the current spreadsheet.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, Eric, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to confirm that.
Uh, yeah. No, ma'am. I just had a question with. For the part both dropping out of the union, are we entitled to that 4.3? Or do we go off of the union contract what they get?
That's probably a question for.
I didn't even hear what.
He's asking if they're not in the union, do they get?
What the Finance Committee is recommending, Eric. So what the Finance Committee is recommending is it goes into the budget line.
Marlene has her.
And then how that money gets spent, you know, with in the DPW would be up to the DPDPW Director and Board of Selectmen. Okay, all right, thank you.
Marlene, did you have your hand up?
I I did. I was just going to add, I did, Diana, and and I I can see I'm I'm hearing that there is a delayed reaction from the meeting room. But I just wanted to add that in response to Eric's question, that my understanding from previous conversations with the union, those members that no longer pay dues still receive the benefits of the agreement.
I believe that's the law, but I mean, I'm certainly job capable of.
That's my understanding.
Okay, hey, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so the next part that we did, oh, Betsy, why don't you why don't you keep 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 going on the next part of what we're recommending?
Okay, so we have two more things. One is we'd like we'd like to put in at least 60,000 into Finance Reserve. We had talked about an amount last week, and we'd like that number to be 60,000.
Well, 60,000 in addition. We already have 30,000 in there, so this 60 would get us to 90.
I'm fine with that.
Marlene, is that? Yeah, thank you. There you go.
That should be the last thing we do to get rid of the rest of the money.
90.
So that brings us down to 30,000.
I don't know, because I think that 177,40 of the the first 2% was already taken out of that, I think.
We still have levy levy limit.
Are you are you taking that from the levy or free cash?
Levy.
Okay.
I I I'm fine with that.
So so what's that bring that bottom line to now, Marlene?
Can everyone see that? 117,874.55.
Yes, and Sharon has to get us the number for the additional 2.3%.
Right.
Okay.
And then last but not least.
You're roughly you're roughly around $70,000.
Yeah.
Right.
I could just plug that in.
And then last but not least, we were recommending that the stabilization fund be brought to $500,000, which I think is another 30,000, but we were thinking that would come from free cash.
Right.
Okay, so we would add an article to fund stabilization?
Yes.
Right.
From free cash?
Yes.
And that and you want to add 100,000, did you?
No, no.
What number? The 117?
To 500,000, which I think is just an additional 30,000.
177 minus 45, right? That's 135, 132 minus 60 for reserve brings it down to 70.
70,000.
Yeah, they're still working on that.
Yeah, but Marlene already put the numbers in for the 117.
But she's waiting for the number from Sharon. Sharon's going to get her the the actual 2.3 number. That's not out of there. And then this, yeah.
Okay, well, it was just the 60 they took.
Sorry, we're just talking. I'm just.
So Brian, that number is about $35,000.
Right, I'm just trying to because we're looking at we're looking at we're looking at the spreadsheet that shows 117, but we have to keep in the back of our mind, it could be 45,000 or so less because of until Sharon verifies the number, correct?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure.
It's going to be about that because two was two was 40,000, so 2.3 is going to be roughly that, I mean.
Right.
Understood, but it hadn't been deducted yet, so I just wanted to make sure we realize that.
It's about $70,000 right now.
Yeah. Correct. Thank you.
I think we felt pretty good about, you know, leaving the levy limit at 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 that number.
Yep. Okay, I think those were.
Then you talked about taking the $30,000 for stabilization from free cash, correct? That what I heard Betsy say?
Yes.
Correct.
Well, so are we going to go through everything? But we're going to go through all the free cash numbers first and then see. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure everything else is getting covered as well. Or was that what was left?
Marlene, will you put the free cash tab back on?
Yeah, just a minute, just plugging in some numbers here.
It's up right now, Darrell, I think.
Finish your.
Sorry.
Okay, so free cash is a balance of 53,536.
Since our last meeting, we all agreed about those things, right?
Yep.
Okay, take 30 and so we're taking 30 from there, leaving 23,000, is that right?
No. 30, I just added the 30.
Got it, I see it now. Got it, okay.
Prior to the 30,000, the balance in free cash was 83,536.
Thank you.
Right.
Got it.
Okay, and we switched the we switched the communication stuff over to borrowing if necessary. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Talked about that a bit on Saturday, and hopefully that, you know, the grants come through with that. You know, this is something that next year we could we could address. If if we're not happy with that amount of borrowing, we can address it again with 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 the free cash from next year, so. But it's the best option for that police and fire communications equipment is to go borrowing.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so.
So that's where we are.
Okay, so if I I'm looking at our agenda, which I don't know if you have in front of you, but Topic 9, which is our joint meeting, we have several bullet points, a couple of which we've just, actually, we haven't. So the first was to consider a vote to reduce reduce the quorum at the town meeting, which is allowed because of COVID and everything, I guess, and the the way we have to do things differently. So I'm assuming we're thinking of, do we want to have this discussion or would, I mean, it is part of the whole discussion? Or do you want to skip over that, Marlene, and go to the more budgety stuff?
Well, I I added that because if if the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee want to consider that, we we need to make sure that we we follow the procedures.
Okay.
To to vote to do that, notify the town clerk, and the moderator should be present when the Board of Selectmen do that. And and Town Council advised that.
So should that be an agenda item on our next?
Because it is with the.
This is what got us into last.
Yeah, but so do we have enough time to have another meeting where we ask the moderator to come and make this decision and then have all the time we need to post it and everything?
Do we have a meeting next? Yeah.
We have a meeting next week?
And and Marlene, the Finance Committee, we don't need to be a part of that.
No, you don't.
We have a meeting next week?
But will there be other budget?
No, we haven't scheduled a meeting next week, but you will need to devote to approve the warrant.
Okay.
Oh, the Finance Committee, right.
So we we could have the quorum discussion.
So so we will make. Yeah, okay.
Marlene, we could have the quorum discussion next week with the moderator, correct?
Oh, the other agenda items that we have to get to?
Yeah, how many weeks before the meet? How many weeks do we need before?
Diana?
What? What? This I'm sorry, there's such a delay here that this is nearly impossible.
There is. It, yeah.
So so what is the other budget items that you need the Finance Committee for tonight?
Okay, so we have discussed DPW wat?
Darrell, you had.
Okay.
Go ahead, Marlene.
We we wanted to discuss DPW, water, wastewater. I have, you know, added some numbers into the budget for the facilities, DPW facilities budget as a result of an increase in electricity in the town hall. There were some increases in the water due to DEP and EPA monitoring and an increase in wastewater for sludge removal. And highway, we haven't added any more money there. Recreation. So I have plugged a line item into the general government tab. If you'd like to consider adding $5,000 for the recreation commission, so.
I think we called that on Saturday, and correct me, Finance Committee, we were okay with that.
Okay.
Again, that can come right out of taxation.
Yep.
I'm totally fine with that.
Likewise.
Ed.
Yes.
It it actually used to be there, but then they had so much in the revolving account, we actually didn't fund the general budget for them for a few years. But now it's tide's turn, yeah.
And this is a time to invest in some some activities for kids, if ever there was one.
To the spreadsheet, the additions, then water and sewer and all that? Electricity, okay, great. Were there any other items, Marlene, that we needed to?
Health.
Health insurance contribution. So it's the Board of Selectmen, and I know Sharon. Yeah, on Thursday, if you'd like, because the money was available in in the levy, if you wanted to consider increasing that, initially, we talked about increasing it from 50 to 55.
Yes, we were we were the Finance Committee is in favor of increasing it from 50 to 55.
Okay. Either way, the Board of Selectmen will need to take a vote to increase it.
Right.
I'm in favor of that as well.
Likewise.
And you can put a mo make a motion to increase to 55.
Should we should we take that vote today, Sharon?
Yeah.
Ed just made the motion to increase it to 55%. I'll second that motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye. Done.
I I do have one question while we're here. I mean, since we have the extra money, do we or do we not want to entertain fixing the bathroom upstairs on the second floor? Because that's a $25,000 item, or do we want to wait and figure out that later on down the road? Whether we use whatever happens, whatever we have for use upstairs, we still need to fix that bathroom.
I think it's got to go to capital.
It's got to go to capital planning.
Because it's over 10,000, I think, Ed. But I don't have.
Yeah.
I I guess I would.
Right.
Like to just wait, and that could be taken up at another time, but.
Okay, hopefully we have money at another time.
I know.
So that's fine.
Focals.
I know, we have not reviewed. You're talking about the warrant articles?
No. Oh, yeah.
We have not done that.
Oh, well, because there were still some money ones on there.
So have Marlene, have you sent us a copy of the warrant?
Uh, no, I don't believe I have.
So so probably when we meet next week, we'll have to go through that if you send us the warrant because the Finance Committee will will need to vote on whether we're, you know, on all the money articles.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
But have you put all the money articles into the budget yet?
Into the on this budget workbook, they're on the appropriations tab here.
Yes.
As the ones in yellow were done.
Right. Yeah, that those are going to require a discussion.
Okay.
Well, this one here, water and sewer budget, that would come from retained earnings. So I'm just, I need to know what that deficit is going to be. And then this other line item compensation for the town clerk, I had a discussion with Town Council about that. And the article was referencing for FY '21. And because we've already set the tax rate, we cannot make an adjustment for the FY '21 budget to increase the town clerk's salary.
But he sent you he sent you a revision.
And that a revision would be FY '22's budget. So if that article is going to be on the warrant, we would fund 8250 dollars from, you want to fund it if if you're willing to do that, taxation?
Goes fast.
And that would be added to the town clerk's salary.
We can do a taxation or free cash, doesn't matter. It's a one-time expense expenditure, correct?
Correct.
Finance Committee, do you care which one?
Free cash, I mean, there's got 50 something thousand dollars there.
Yeah, so let's just take it from free cash. Okay.
Could snow and ice appear on here, Marlene?
Uh, no, we did not do.
No, because we're where are we funding it from free cash?
No, we did not fund it from free cash.
Okay, so all right, so it's, yeah, okay.
But we we put money in here, so it will be taken care of when we do the cherry, the thing in the ball.
Recap.
Yeah, it's not on that. All right, I. Yeah, it's not on that, all right, I get it, it's not on there because it's not a special article funded on free cash.
Right, okay. It's on one of the other tabs, right?
What tab does it appear on, Marlene? Can you tell me?
I'm sorry, one moment, please. You guys are moving faster than I am.
That's fine.
Sorry.
I'll be with you in one moment.
Betsy, I think it's in other financing uses.
Yeah, so, you're looking for the snow and ice right here. We plugged 105,000, can you see this?
Yes.
So, when are we going to meet next week?
It's going to have to be the 26th if you want to get everything posted by the 27th. It's two weeks before, right, the town meeting?
I had want to post the warrant. Actually, the warrant has to be posted on May 4th.
Oh.
I wanted to get it wrapped up, you know, this week so that we could post it next week. But the app, it has to be posted on May 4th. It must.
Well, do we just want to go over the articles now, Daryl? Because we don't, there's really nothing else to meet about next week unless something goes wrong, right?
Right, and the only other thing we have to, well, that, that, can we vote on the budget even though we don't really have the final number until Sharon and Marlene and Lori put in that additional 2.3%? Or, we can, we can, we can approve the budget without, with, like it is now, can't we?
Yeah.
Probably better to wait, probably better to wait.
I, I would recommend you wait.
And I would love, I would like to see the warrant, too.
Yeah, I can, I can pull that up if you'd like.
We could go over those, Betsy, here. I mean, she's done, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, and what I'm opening up is the draft with council's revisions that were just made today. So, you'll see those. So, anyway, let me know whenever you're ready to start.
Let's go.
Yeah. I'm okay, let's go to the money articles.
Right.
Okay.
So, um, what, wait, there's one of these early ones we have to, where's the chapter 91, Marlene?
Articles 1 through 4, chapter 90 is article 4.
Okay, so, are we going to vote to recommend that article?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Chapter 90, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Next article are the fund balance deficits.
Oh, okay.
Town Hall.
We have to call that Phase 2 thing something different. We can't say it was a feasibility of $215,000.
I'll second it.
You said you recommend?
Yes.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The next article are prior year expenses. That is the, what's that, the 5,000?
Yes.
Let's see.
I remember, 5,600.
5,298.
Yeah.
Right. That's a recommend.
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have drafted an article here to transfer money from water and sewer retained earnings to fund the deficit.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is the article to fund the 8,250 for the town clerk's salary, the one-time cost.
Okay. All in favor?
I'll put the, oh, sorry. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next article is to transfer the sum of $10,000 from Article 21. At the May 2012 Annual Town Meeting, there was an authorization to fund $10,000 for mo, police, for the police department's mobile software. They have not used that and would like to use the money for purchasing radios.
Hmm.
Is this different somehow than the money that we're going to borrow to purchase communications equipment?
That was my question. Is this for the, is that, is this for the radios that they're talking about?
And would it be enough to come the amount we're borrowing?
It should be, if.
Well, or be in addition to, if they need more than they asked for originally.
Right. I, I'm okay, you guys okay with it?
I guess.
This is money that was appropriated that they didn't spend, so.
I'm amazed.
As long as we're not, as long as it's not duplicative equipment, then that's fine.
Yeah.
So, what we would do is reduce the amount we're going to borrow by 10,000.
Yeah.
If, if they're for the same thing.
Right.
Okay, so, that, we need, we need to get with Chief DeKoschak and confirm, you know, are these two separate things? And, and I would agree, if they're for the same thing, then yeah, we would have to deduct it from the other. But if they're something different, then obviously, we'd, we'd have to fund both of them still.
Is that a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm making a note because I would like that question answered.
Okay.
That's fair.
They'll have an answer for that by next week when we meet, right?
Yes, I know, oh, absolutely.
Sorry, okay. Yeah, well, once we get the answer to that, we'll decide.
It was 10,000.
Correct. We didn't vote on that, so is that going to say, are we going to wait to recommend it?
Yeah, let's wait to recommend until we get an answer.
This is the police one?
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, okay.
The next article, if you recall, there were two articles for the Route 5 Water and Sewer Project. One was a straight borrowing, the other one was a, a debt exclusion. And so, Sharon, just can, you can confirm, I believe, what we, well, actually, both passed?
Both passed.
Right, so, we need to get rid of one of them. So, we're getting rid of.
Yeah, we passed both intentionally because we didn't know what would happen when it went to the ballot.
Right, that's right, okay. So, all we're doing is, is, you know, getting rid of this article.
Which one wasn't?
You're just going to rescind it.
Should say it.
Correct.
We should.
Okay.
Cleanup, it's for cleanup.
Understood, understood, but we should speak to it at town meeting and say, the reason we're doing this is because we, we are doing a debt exclusion, or we are doing a borrowing, that's why we're getting rid of this one, right?
Right.
So, we just need to know.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right, it is a house cleaning item, but you're right, Brian, we still need to explain.
Well, because someone's going to ask.
I can see it now.
Yes.
The next article is a house cleaning as well. And we received a grant for the hiking trail, and the grant funds came in before the borrowing was done.
Oh, good.
Okay. So, it's a rescind, another rescind.
It is.
Okay.
The next article is an article the Cemetery Commission has, has placed on the warrant. If this doesn't involve any money.
I thought we, I thought we decided, well, I mean, we, I don't see why we're doing this. I thought that was the whole nature of the conversation we had tonight.
Status quo, so.
To leave it the way it was. I mean, we didn't take any vote on that, but we don't, why do we have to vote to leave things the way they are? I thought that the, the end result of our conversation tonight with Lucinda was that we weren't going to move forward with this.
Correct, that was mine, too. But Finance Committee doesn't need to be part of that, but we can confirm that.
I, I, okay, I will get confirmation of that and, and certainly remove it.
Aren't we giving you confirmation of that? I mean.
It doesn't need to be on, it doesn't need to be on the town warrant.
Okay.
Wasn't it a request for us to put it on the warrant?
I'm not, what's your question, Diana?
I mean, this isn't submitted by petition or anything like that, it was just they asked us to put it on.
No, it was not.
So, I, I mean, in light of our conversation earlier tonight, my understanding was we weren't going to do this.
It was going to say status quo.
Right.
That, that was my inter, that was my understanding.
Okay, all right. The next article is the article voted at the November 2020 Special Town Meeting for the Route 5 Water and Sewer Project.
And we have to do it again?
Revote that?
We have to revote it? Okay.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we do the second one, wouldn't we do the next one first if we were going to do that, and then?
The petition?
Yeah.
This is petition, put that one first?
Well, if, if, if the petition doesn't pass, then we don't need to revote, right? The previous article?
No, the standing, Brian, is that we still need to vote this article.
Why?
It's, it's to ratify, help ratify the, the.
Because of the.
Complaint that's been filed.
Okay.
Okay.
I still, I, so, it, it still seems.
Any questions about previous actions moot?
Yeah, I mean, I get it, but the previous action is the same thing that we're voting on that night. It's no, the language is no different, I don't believe. Well, we, the Board of Selectmen and Marlene, we'll talk about it. I, I just think the order seems skewed to me as to which.
I can, I can switch those around.
Well, let's, we can have the conversation, we don't have to talk about it now. Let's keep going with any money articles for the Finance Committee.
Okay. Capital projects. So, we have here, this is the communications equipment, and this is a straight borrowing.
We would recommend that?
Yes, we want to recommend that.
Right, do we, Sean, don't we, we recommend, it's a money thing, right? Okay, so, yes.
Dollar amount there? That's going to, that's about.
255,000.
255,000, correct?
Yes.
I don't see it in here.
Can you scroll a little bit because we can't see the number?
I didn't have, I don't have the number in the article, the motion.
The motion has the number in it.
Correct.
That's right.
Isn't it like 255,000, something like that?
I thought it was around 265, but I will confirm that.
It's up there.
Okay.
Next article is for the breathing apparatus for the fire department, and that is.
It's free cash, isn't it?
That is coming out of free cash.
Three hours ago.
That is 150,000.
Okay. We would vote to recommend that. Finance Committee? Second?
Aye.
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 Aye. Great, okay.
The next one is the paramedic equipment, and that is coming from.
Free cash.
That's the final, that's the final tranche, right?
Yeah, it's the final payment.
13.5.
13.5 or something like that, yeah.
13.8. Yeah.
13.8, thank you, Diana.
I'll move to recommend the article.
That's after, paramedic equipment, yes, 13,720.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The next article is to under, to remove the underground fuel tank at the highway garage. And that is roughly, I believe, 90, yes, 95,000 from free cash.
Yeah, move to recommend.
There's a second?
Okay.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm trying to find out what happened to Kim, hang on.
Kim's here.
I'm here. Oh, there you are.
Keeps moving about the screen.
Okay, okay, that's what happened.
The next article is to replace eight fire hydrants. And that is $40,000.
Move to recommend.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Next article is to replace 1,000 feet of water main on Elm Court. And that is 51,000.
I'll move to recommend the article.
Second.
Was that coming out of free cash, too? I can't remember.
Yes, free cash.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Next item is to replace the walk-in freezer at Smith Academy.
40,000, 500?
That is 40,000, yeah, 500, thank you, Sean.
Move to recommend the article.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Again, that is from free cash, these are all from free cash.
We're going to have to add a meeting next week.
The next one is to replace flooring and windows at the public library. And that is 50,000 from free cash.
I'll move. I'll recommend the article.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that does it for capital. Add anything else? No, we didn't, okay. I will be adding an article to fund the stabilization.
Excuse me.
All right.
Uh, next are the community preservation articles. The first one is their standard article to appropriate funds for the reserve, the various reserves.
I'll move to recommend the article to appropriate the funds. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Community preservation?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
To fund the revolving, reserve accounts.
Okay.
Marlene, I know you have to still add the article about the 60,000 for stabilization, but shouldn't the Finance Committee vote tonight to recommend it?
I mean.
Yes.
We can, I mean, we can also recommend it right before town meeting if we want to.
Right. We're going to be meeting, we'll, we'll be meeting next week, you know, ever so briefly, I hope, just to can vote on the budget.
Okay.
But we can vote on that at the same time.
Okay.
Okay. And the, the next article is the Community Preservation Commission article for $9,862 to preserve and restore historic town vinyl records in the town clerk's office.
Okay, move to recommend the article.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next article is our annual re- The next article is our annual revolving fund article. Sharon, I just want to ask you, um, are you comfortable leaving the tax title at twenty-five thousand? I know we voted that one-time increase for this year. I just wanted to check with you.
Yeah, I would leave it, if I had to ask again next year again, it would come out of money that we brought in, so I'm comfortable leaving it that way for now.
Okay. Finance Committee?
I would move to recommend that article. I don't see anything to change there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is the, um, does the recreation not have a revolving account anymore?
They do. They still have, they still have the, um, their revolving fund.
Oh, it's just.
Depleted.
Okay.
Yeah, it's under a different statute.
Right, under a different statute, yep.
We have, yeah. Next article, money article, the operating budget.
Totally.
Which we're working on.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll vote to recommend that next week.
Okay. So, speaking of the operating budget, if we could just go back for a moment to the budget workbook, there were a list of, of items that we, or a list we were tracking where we added, added money, and I had noticed Betsy and other members of the Finance Committee that there was five hundred dollars for the treasure collector's office, the place for postage, and we added that at the last meeting. But there was also five hundred dollars for certification. That was not added. So I want to make sure that I, um.
We did mean to do that. That was for the treasurer, right?
Yeah.
We wanted to do that.
I believe so. It is on the treasurer's site, correct, Sharon?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're okay with that.
Yes, I think we thought we had done that.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-seven zero four. Okay. All right. And, all right, we go back to the, and I believe that was.
The end.
I'm sorry. So that does it for the money articles. The next are, are, uh, general bylaws and zoning bylaw changes?
Marlene, do you want to tell them about the two others that we want to add for money articles? We currently have a water stabilization and sewer stabilization account that we don't use, each of which have a thousand, one thousand ninety-five dollars in that we don't use, and as part of our cleanup, I'm trying to reduce the amount of bank accounts we have. So this is one of the suggestions was to take that money, and Marlene's gonna put an article together so that we can put that money. The question is where can it go, but to close those stabilization accounts because we're not using them?
Can it go on the enterprise?
To regular stabilization?
Or regular stabilization.
Marlene was going to check that. Wait, Marlene?
Right. I, I.
Less accounts, the better.
Talked earlier about this, well, we talked about it a few weeks ago. I, I thought we had already closed them out. I did a little bit of research and I didn't turn anything up yet, um, but, you know, worst-case situation, you know, uh, we put an article on and, um, you know, in, between now and town meeting, I'll do some more research. But I would think if we did, something would have turned up by now.
Okay. I think we're okay with that. Was it another money article?
Nope, so those, that'll, I don't know if we can word it in one or two. There's two accounts, but however, it has to get word in, Marlene.
We should be able to, yeah, do one article. So I said, they said that, that is it for the money article.
Okay. So, let's, let's decide when we're meeting next week. Are we Monday or Tuesday? Is that? Or, I assume those are our choices?
Not, not that I'm important for your meetings, but, um, I'm on vacation starting Tuesday through the fourth.
Okay.
But I don't, I mean, we don't need Lydia for this meeting.
We're, we're really just finalizing the budget. That's the only, whatever changes we made tonight, we'll, we'll finalize, so.
I mean, I'm fine with doing it Monday night, but if Tuesday works for everyone else, I think we'd be okay to go ahead.
Either or. I'm good.
Let me, I have to grab my phone so I can see my calendar.
Lydia, will Elena be here next week?
Yes, Elena will be here next week. Um, the office will be open all day on Monday, but we'll close on Tuesday and Thursday at one.
Okay.
So hopefully the warrant will get posted as soon as you can and not wait till the fourth.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I, I can, I can meet the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, doesn't matter. Finance, what's better for you guys?
Either.
Okay.
Um, the twenty-sixth is better for me.
The twenty-sixth is better for me. I have another event on the twenty-seventh at seven-thirty.
Okay. So can we do.
Let's get it done Monday.
Ford Switman, can we do, and Marlene, can we do the?
Good Monday?
Monday at six-thirty, the twenty-sixth?
Works for me.
Will do.
We should be able to wrap everything up in pretty short order.
Yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't need to be long.
Right. Right.
Okay, so Monday it is.
All right.
Diana?
Yes.
I ask one question. People are starting to ask me when and where the town meeting is going to be held. Has the board made a final decision, six o'clock at the pavilion?
What, I think.
Yeah, we've already decided that.
Okay.
We did? Did we?
Oh, last time I talked to you.
I guess so.
They hadn't, they hadn't voted on it or something.
I don't think we did.
I didn't, I didn't think we voted on it, but.
No, they, they haven't voted on it, but we've had discussions about holding it at the pavilion.
I think that was going to be part of those final discussions on Monday night, no? Like, where, when, and what the quorum is going to be.
Okay, because people are already starting to ask, and, you know, sooner I can get the word out, the more people will get.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I had asked for input from you and Joe, Lydia, remember? I, we had conversations about it.
Yeah, yeah, and I know we discussed it and, and, but I, I was waiting for a, a vote, you know, a final decision that that's what it was going to be before I start advertising it.
Has the town moderator indicated when and where he wants it, Marlene or Lydia?
Moderator is okay with the pavilion, as far as I know.
Yep, six o'clock at the pavilion is what I heard.
Well, I mean, what I would tell people is that the, the final decision will be made on Monday, April twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, is there any more business for the Finance Committee tonight?
I have one more question about the warrant, but it has nothing to do with the Finance Committee, so if you guys want to adjourn, you don't have to stay for it.
I do have one more item, too, that I wanted to, um, bring up, that's listed there.
For the Finance Committee?
No, for the Board of Selectmen, thank you.
For the Board of Selectmen. Okay, Finance Committee, do you have any, anything else?
No, looking forward to Monday.
Okay, I take a motion to adjourn for the Finance?
No move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Switman, thank you so much. Marlene, everybody else, thank you. We'll talk to you next Monday.
Thanks, Darrell.
Good night.
Lydia, I have a question for you, Lydia, too. So, Marlene's got a question, Diana has a question, and I have a question. So, who's going first?
Mine's quick.
Okay.
The, um, the, this article here about changing, um, Board of Selectmen to Select Board, we, we tabled that last year because there was some other things that had to happen first with the planning board, I think, and ZBA and everything. Has that been done?
I've been told it has been done.
Okay. Then I'm.
I believe in that Wednesday night.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want to put it on and then have to be told we have to take it off again, so.
Yeah, I, 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 I really wasn't following it that close. You know, I, I knew you guys were working on it, but I wasn't.
Okay, that was, that was it. That was my only question.
My question, Lydia, it has to do with if the, if the amount of the quorum is changed, if it's lowered from a, from a timeframe perspective, because I want to make sure as a town, if we, if we decide to do that next week, we are within all the rules and guidelines of, of making the public known and posting it and whatever else it is we have to do.
Right, and we will have to publish in the newspaper. We'll do that.
Yeah.
Well, you're going to publish in the newspaper?
Well, it, statute says you have to publish. We published on the town's website.
Yep.
But, you know, under this complaint that the town received from.
But how much, how much notice? How much notice? A week, three days, two weeks?
It's gotta be, it's gotta be a week, a week before you have your meeting that you're going to discuss it.
Yeah.
So the, the.
So we can't discuss it next Monday then?
A week before.
So we have to post it.
Seven days.
We have to discuss it now to post it for next week.
Okay, now you're going to start publishing in the paper, but that's what the attorney's recommending, right? But yet, any other statute where it requires you to publish in the paper, it says.
It says newspaper.
Publish in a local paper.
Correct.
It says that.
Okay, so, so, so to be clear, I understand what you're both saying, but if we, if we want to take, if we want to have a conversation and possibly a vote on changing.
When do you want to, when do you want to do that, Brian?
Well, that, that's my question. We, we, we need to, that's what I'm trying to say. We, we wouldn't be able to do it next Monday because you're saying we have to post that we're going to have that conversation at least a week ahead of time. Is that correct? Did I understand you?
A notice has to be published that the board is going to meet and talk about lowering the quorum.
Well, we are running out of time.
Right.
So we'd have to, we'd have, if, if we're looking to have that conversation and have it with Joe, the town moderator, we need to know, we need to make that, I think we need to make a decision tonight if we want to have that conversation late next week.
Yeah, it's going to have to. It can't be done on Monday.
Right.
Because we don't have time to.
We don't have to do Monday. We don't want, tomorrow's Wednesday, so the soonest we could probably vote to have the conversation, if we want to, would be Thursday or Friday of next week. Would that?
But you could also have that meeting closer to town meeting. I mean, the, where you discuss to lower the quorum doesn't, you know, you, the, when you did it for the annual meeting last year, you voted to lower the quorum at your meeting that was an hour before the meeting, before the town meeting.
No, we vote, no, we, we voted well before then to lower the quorum last year, last November.
That was the special town meeting. You voted well before the meeting. But at the annual town meeting, the vote to lower the quorum was at your meeting an hour before the town meeting.
Okay, so I have two trains of thought on this. One, maybe we just don't vote to lower the quorum because I think people are much more comfortable this year coming out to the pavilion. It was very well-attended last year. We may have met quorum last year. So that's on the table, and then the other option is to get that notice posted and discuss it at our meeting on May fourth. Because the warrant gets posted regardless of this. This discussion is separate.
Right.
So we could, so we could pu- publish that we're going to talk about it on the fourth.
Okay.
And, and we may or may not discuss it on the fourth, but at least we're covered that way, right?
Right.
Right.
I, I just want to make sure that we're, nothing comes to bite us down the road. That's, that's all I was concerned about.
So if we could get that published for a discussion on the fourth, but I, I think that there's plenty of reason to not even entertain reducing the quorum.
And, and, and I'm assuming that your meeting on the fourth, oh, on, on May fourth?
Yeah.
We're going to want to meet on the third, right? It's got to be seven days beforehand. If town meeting's on the eleventh, then everything's got to be published and put out on the fourth.
Because they're separate issues. The warrant will be finalized next week, then it can be pub, it can be posted. The quorum discussion is, doesn't have anything to do with the posting of the warrant.
Correct.
So we could do it on the fourth.
Why are we meeting on May fourth?
We have a regularly scheduled meeting.
Oh, just our regular, okay, that, I thought it was about town meeting a week later.
No, we have, we have a regularly scheduled meeting on the fourth. That's how I would proceed, but I would certainly entertain not reducing the quorum and not going through any of it.
Yeah, I mean, all your notice, all you're doing in the notice is saying you're going to discuss lowering the quorum.
Right.
It, it doesn't, you know, it's, not that you're necessarily going to do it.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, there is, there, like, you know, Brian was just saying, I don't know if you could hear him, and we, we could get into problems if you have a terrible weather night. You know, if it's pouring rain, you know, it might be a, I mean, we had the most perfect, beautiful night ever for town meeting last year.
Yeah. And I think we need Joe's input.
Yeah.
Of course, as, as the moderator, so.
So I, I don't know, Marlene, if you need us to take an official action to say we want to publish this and ask that Joe come to the May fourth meeting so we can finalize our, you know, have our quorum discussion and make that decision.
Okay, will do.
Is that all right with you, Ed?
Yes, I think we should post that we're going to discuss it. We, we don't have to change it when we discuss it, as long as we're covering.
Or you can lower it to like forty-five.
Right.
Yeah, right. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want to go, I don't think we need to go too deep, but.
You, you can't, you can't vote less than ten percent of what the.
Yeah, no, I don't think we want to go that deep. Yeah.
Right, well, our, that's seven people, or seven point five people.
Well, we, that, all that number discussion we can have on the fourth, but, okay. Okay, Marlene, you said you had something else?
Do we have to take a motion on?
Listed under topic nine is the petition from Ms. Berry for the town meeting warrant, and I just wanted the board to acknowledge receipt of that petition. As you saw, it is on the warrant, but I just wanted to make sure that it was acknowledged.
So I will acknowledge that the board has received an article, um, a petition to put an article on the town meeting that would rescind the vote taken to do the sewer project on Route five and ten. Um, and that, and there are signatures that, if I understand by the check marks, Lydia, you did verify.
Yeah, they've been certified.
Okay. So there are enough signatures on this to, to put this on for townspeople.
Yeah, you, you only need ten. They had a bunch of them.
Yeah, and so there's enough on there for them to be on there, um, and it'll be up for discussion that evening with, with voters. Uh, and that has to do with dissatisfaction of a placement of a pumping station.
Yep, that's not really a mo, that's just an acknowledgement, right?
We don't have, yeah, do we have to actually move? I mean, we don't have to move to put it on. They got it on.
Right.
By petition.
Well, I went ahead and put it on. It, it automatically, by petition, it, it gets placed on the warrant.
Yeah, it goes on. We don't have to, we don't have to take an action on that. Okay. Ed, you started to say something.
I was, I was, I thought we, if we're going to have a discussion on May fourth, in order to have the discussion on May fourth, I thought we had to have a motion to move ahead to have the discussion on May fourth. Not that we're going to, uh, vote for reduced quorum, but maybe we don't.
No, you're, you're talking, I, I agree with you. You're talking about, we need to let, we need to publish something seven days before May fourth, if that's when we're having the conversation, correct, Lydia and Marlene?
Yes.
So my question was.
The public needs to know we're going to have a conversation on whatever date it is. We have to post that at least seven days ahead of time.
But my question was, in order for us to post it, in order to have the conversation, do we need to entertain a motion at this time to say we're going to discuss it on May fourth? This way we're covered, or?
Or maybe it's a consensus, you know, maybe it's just a matter of saying we're going to.
Do we need a motion, Marlene, to do that?
To publish? It isn't going to hurt, so go right ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion that we publish a notice that on May fourth, we will be discussing if we will, um, reduce quorum for the annual town meeting.
And what time are you going to have that meeting? Because I'm going to have to. 'Cause I'm gonna have to put, that'll have to be in the notice as well. The time of your meeting on the...
Well, our meetings are usually at five-thirty, so...
Our, our meetings are at five-thirty, so if we could maybe post that for five-forty-five, we'll get all the, uh, housekeeping out of the way, and then do that right at five-forty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that we would like town moderator, Joe LaValle, present.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second that, but I'd just like to say, I'd like some more information on what we can and can't do, what our options are, that's all. Not to say that we're gonna do anything, or do nothing, but if, if we go forth in our conversation, and, and if we decide to reduce the quorum, what is the percentage? We don't wanna go too low, I agree with that, but we just want more information, that's all.
Yep.
So I second that.
Okay, so a motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marlene and Lydia, for...
Marlene? I'll have that information for you.
Okay.
Marlene, do you, do you wanna just send that, you, you drafted the motion, or the motion, got motion on the brain, you drafted the notice before, do you wanna draft that and just get it off to the paper tomorrow? 'Cause I'm not gonna be there till Thursday.
Yes, I'll do that.
And I'm thinking, it, it should be a legal notice, if you just put it in, yeah, if you just put it in, unfortunately, it's more expensive, but if you just put it into it as a news brief, they don't guarantee when it'll be published, but if you submit it as a legal notice...
No, I, it probably needs to be a legal notice.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I intended to have.
Yeah, it should, it should be a legal notice. Okay.
Yeah. Are you without power, Lydia?
No, no, I just didn't turn the lights on yet, and it, it kept getting darker, and I was too lazy to get up.
Um, and that was, that same notice, that same, that same notice would like be up on our website and other, other places people check for information, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, because I'm, I'm...
Okay. Okay, very good.
I don't agree, I don't agree with this whole publication in the newspaper thing, but, well...
Them's the rules.
No, it doesn't, it just says publish, it just, it doesn't say in a paper, the other statutes say in a paper.
Right.
Right, but then no one can argue or make a complaint that we didn't publish.
Right. But are we opening up the doors for, you know, other ones? We didn't do that, we didn't publish in a newspaper for the other ones.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, uh, hopefully this will be the last one, we have to worry about it. We can be back to having town meetings indoors. Or not, excuse me, it has nothing to do with that, we can be back to just not having to worry about making quorum.
Right.
I actually think we're gonna be, make quorum this time, but, whatever. Okay, so, anything else, anybody? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I'm just double-checking, making sure we did all the topics.
Ed's keeping us on our toes, Ed's, Ed's keeping it real over here.
I'll second.
We have the final approval.
Uh, okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John, thanks, Lydia.